Yeah, like here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sharing glasses.
I'm glad we got some people show up.
Jack, do you have a paper copy of the agenda?
It should be.
Oh, on the paper?
You want just a copy of the agenda?
Yeah.
Hang on just a minute now, I'll just, I'll print you one out real quick.
If you've got one.
Yeah, hang on.
So guys, if I say microphone or mic, that means you're, you need to get on your mic.
Hold on.
And you can, and same applies to me.
Yeah, I got it.
Brian always does it right. We're the ones who slide.
Call tonight's city council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. I will make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, and I would like to add item 4.0B, attachment 4, resolution 2023-47, a resolution to fill the mayoral position vacated by the resignation of Mr. Tim Harrington.
I second it.
Any discussion?
Brian, before you approve that, that needs to be resolution 46.
It is.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-three dash forty-six.
Okay.
I thought I read forty-six.
I thought you read forty-seven, but I just.
That's what I heard.
Okay, well, it's forty-six.
Okay.
For clarification, it's forty-six.
Okay.
Any discussion? To the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. We have our agenda, presentations and public hearings. Item A, resolution 2023-38, accept resignation of Mayor Tim Harrington, declaration of a mayoral. Jack?
Thank you, Brian. Tim Harrington submitted his resignation as mayor effective immediately on June 1st, 2023. Unless the resignation expressly states it is to take effect at a future date, the resignation will be effective when received by city council. The resignation states it takes effect on a specified date. The vacancy occurs on the date it has been received by the council or other official authorized by council to receive the documents on its behalf, even if the council has not been formally accepted at a council meeting. To withdraw resignation, the resigning officer must submit a written statement of withdrawal in the same manner as the resignation. In order to be effective, the withdrawal must be received before the council accepts the resignation by resolution or before an officer authorized to receive it has issued a written acceptance. Acting Mayor and council member Brian Muntles performed the duties of mayor and will continue with these duties until a successor is appointed. Resignation should be accepted by resolution of the city council, and upon acceptance, the resignation cannot be withdrawn. As the council must fill vacancies in elective offices, it must make a determination as to the vacancy. In this case, the resignation of Mr. Harrington supports the existence of the vacancy, and council should pass a resolution declaring the mayor's seat vacant and then fill it as soon as possible. State law provides that statutory city councils make the appointment to fill a vacancy, except in the case of a tie vote when the mayor makes the appointment. That means that all members of the council, including the mayor, can vote on the appointment. As long as at least a quorum of council is present, a majority vote of those present is sufficient to make the appointment. When the vacancy is for the mayor's office and the council casts a tie vote, the acting mayor should make the appointment. The acting mayor may not, however, appoint himself or herself. The council may appoint any individual who is eligible for election to that office. Generally, to be eligible, a person must be a U.S. citizen, a resident of the city, and at least 21 years old. The council is not obligated to appoint any candidate previously defeated in an election for office. A resigning council member may not vote on the appointment of the successor to that vacancy. Council member who is elected mayor, however, may participate in the appointment vote to fill the vacancy in his or her former council position. Minnesota law is silent on the appointment process, and thus, the city council may decide how it will go about to determine the persons to appoint. As to special elections, if the vacancy occurs on or after the first day to file as a candidate for the next regular city election, or if less than two years remain in the unexpired term, the city does not need to hold a special election, and the appointed person can serve out the remainder of that unexpired term. In this case, no special election is required. Recommendation number one from staff is to consider the approval of resolution 23-223-38, acceptance of the resignation of Tim Harrington as mayor of East Bethel and declaring the vacancy of this seat, and upon this action, filling the seat as soon as possible.
So we are at recommendation number one, accepting the resignation?
And the resignation and declaring the vacancy. That's both included in the same resolution.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation from Tim Harrington, resolution 2023-38, and declaring a vacancy and appointment.
Second.
Discussion? To no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommendation number two, Jack?
Recommendation number two is, should a city member of city council be appointed to the mayor's seat, council is requested to approve resolution 2023-39, declaring the vacancy of a city council seat and making appointment for the seat as soon as possible. However, before we act on this resolution, the resolution we approved to be added to the agenda, 2023-46, should be considered. That resolution states that the East Bethel City Council, following prior precedents, will seek by nomination from its members a mayoral candidate, followed by a vote to fill this seat from the nominees. The council will be requested to nominate and vote for the mayoral appointment as a result of this resolution. Staff is requesting that resolution 2023-46 follow the process of selecting a nominee for mayor.
Okay, so we have resolution number two, which declares a vacancy, and then we have recommendation number three, which would be resolution 2023-46.
Correct.
Okay. So to that, take a motion for recommendation number two?
We've got to do number three first. Number three is the appointment of the mayor, and then after the mayor is appointed, it'll be appointed from the member of the council, so there'll be a vacant council seat, so then we can declare that a vacancy.
Well, how do you, how do you want to do that?
But, but don't we have to declare the mayor's seat vacant?
That's done in the initial resolution that you just approved.
We, we declare the seat vacant in the other.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I had the same question.
Okay, just want to make sure we're on the same page. Fair question.
How do you want to do it?
So, the norm, the procedure that we follow in the past is that council decides to nominate one of their own for the mayor, and with that, there'll be a vote on the nominees, and that person will then become the mayor who receives the most votes, so. And again, in the case of.
A secret ballot or voice vote or what?
It's been a voice vote in the past. So what we'd be seeking was a nomination from one of you to appoint a city, sitting city council person to the mayor's position.
Well, I'd like to nominate Kevin Lewis for that position of mayor from the city council.
Second.
Acting mayor and council members, the job of the chair is to see if there are going to be any other nominations. You had asked three times if there are no other nominations, you would close nominations. And then, of course, you would have all your candidates' nominations on the ballot, and that's where you would have the, have the vote or the discussion.
Okay, so, ask three times, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay.
Now nominations are closed.
Nominations not closed.
Before this body, and you can have a discussion. If there's no discussion, then as with any other particular agenda item, he would then bring it to a vote.
Okay, would this be a roll call vote or?
It doesn't, it does not need to be a roll call vote.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion on this matter? To the motion then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries.
At which point, council member Kevin Lewis now has been nominated as the mayor of the city of East Bethel.
And at this time, we would request you to approve resolution 2023-46, which states that Kevin Lewis has been appointed the mayor of East Bethel, and upon that approval, we'll ask the newly appointed mayor to take the oath of office.
So we have one more motion to approve?
Then we'll do the 2023-39. Kevin will take over the meeting after this item is taken care of.
Okay, so we have resolution 2023-46 to approve?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2023-46, Kevin Lewis as our new mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion now carries.
Kevin?
Just so everybody knows, I only have two years left in my term, they have four. That's why I get the job. Because otherwise, they would be giving up two years of their terms. No other qualifications, trust me. Oath of office, aye Kevin Lewis, to hereby solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully, justly, and impartially discharge the duties of mayor for the city of East Bethel, county of Anoka, state of Minnesota, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Thank you, Kevin. You're duly sworn in as the new mayor, and you take over the meeting.
Feel power mad already. So do I fill this out and sign it?
Yeah, you can fill, you can do that at the end of the meeting if you'd like, or do it now. And then the only thing we have to conclude with this item is resolution 2023-39, which is to make a motion to open, to, excuse me, to declare the declaration of a vacancy of the city council seat.
I'll make a motion to the resolution 2023-39 to open this up for applicants for the vacant council seat.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank city administrator Jack and our city attorney, Eric Larson, for doing all this in timely matter, a matter that's easy to follow, so that this was an easy process in a, a time that, well, it was a time. So, that's my only comment.
Agreed. So any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, going forward then, do you want to set the application deadline for the council seats for the next council meeting?
Yeah. Just, just as a way of informing folks, we have someone in mind to take over my council seat, and it's someone with a lot of experience in, in this city's government. And, but we wanted, instead of going ahead and appointing him, which we could do, we wanted to leave this two-week period. So if anybody else feels like they are better suited to do the job than Bob DeRoches, who's a former mayor, former city council member, former roads commission, and all-around terrific guy, please submit your, your letter of interest and your resume and all that, and we'll look it over, and we'll schedule an interview. We just want the process to be open the way it should be, so. But otherwise, we're going to name whoever it is, if it's Bob or somebody else. We'll name the fifth member of the city council on June 26th, two weeks from tonight. And we're pretty much deferring major business until the city council is fully impaneled. Seems only appropriate.
And into that, we'll put the notifications in the city, on the city website, the reader board, our social media outlets, and any other opportunities we have to get that word out, so.
Yeah, I don't know if the East Bethel Bulletin is going to be out in time to make a difference or not, but.
It would be very close, I talked to Kerry about that today.
Nip and tuck.
So.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm new to this, so you're going to have to bear with me a little bit. So, so what's my next step here, Jack, is it?
Item four C.
Item four?
C.
C, okay. And that's a public hearing on the Nexus Conduit bond financing. And want to thank whoever's here to speak about that, we appreciate you showing up tonight. And just, just to throw it out there, if you have something to say that doesn't pertain exactly to the conduit bond financing, feel free to say it. Okay? That's, that's kind of the way the letter said, was is all about the conduit bond financing, but if you have other thoughts, please feel free to share them. So who would like to open the public hearing now, I guess, huh? Or do you have to read it first and then go into it?
I'll, I'll just read this little report, and then we can open the public hearing. Thank you.
Like I said, you got to bear with me a little bit.
Thank you, Kevin. At the May 1st, 2023 work meeting, city council received a presentation from the city's bond counsel, Dorsey, and financial advisor, Ellers, regarding a request for the city's participation in a $10 million conduit bond financing for the proposed purchase of the Cambia Hills facility by Nexus Family Healing. The city of Ham Lake initially considered a partner with East Bethel to be a $7 million bond issue for the project, but later declined to participate as a co-partner in the issuance. However, the Anoka County Finance Committee, composed of commissioners Matt Look, Julie Brastead, and Jeff Reinert, recommended approval of the Nexus request to be the second bond conduit partner behind East Bethel. The committee showed a high level of support for their service and understood the value the conduit bond program could bring to the project. The committee expects their recommendation to receive all county approvals. ISD 15 school superintendent, Carsten Anderson, spoke in support of the need for the service to be provided by Nexus at the May 1st meeting, but had concerns regarding charges for rent, state reimbursement of the ISD's 15 costs for out-of-district students, and staffing for district-provided services. City council members questioned if there would be additional costs borne by the school district to support these services. Discussions are still underway to resolve these matters. From the presentation made to city council on May 22nd and further reviewed at the June 5th, 2023 city council member, Nexus indicated they are coming to East Bethel either with or without the approval of the conduit bond financing. The difference between the two scenarios is that without conduit bond financing, Nexus would have a higher cost of borrowing, of which a portion of that would be passed along to the school district, and higher costs for classroom rental space and other chargeable expenses for the educational components of their service. Approval of the conduit bond financing would result in lower costs to the ISD as opposed to taking no action or rejecting this consideration. City of East Bethel will hold a public hearing tonight to take comments regarding the consideration of issuing the conduit bonds and the amount of $10 million to Nexus Diversified Community Services. As stated before, Anoka County has decreed to partner with the city and issue $7 million in bonds to complement the city's proposed participation. Nexus will be purchasing the Cambia Hills property and provide the same services as the previous operator, Cambia Hills of East Bethel LLC. The bonds that would be issued pose no liability or expense to the city and qualify for tax-exempt status that will enable a lower payback of the bonds over conventional financing. The implication of this savings is a lesser impact on potential costs to the school district. Conduit bonding is the means to issue tax-exempt bonds to finance healthcare services. Again, this issuance would create no liability or expense to the city. This public hearing is related to the issuance of the bonds. The educational component of the issued service is a separate matter with the independent school district, and these two groups, as previously stated, are engaged in discussions to work out details of their agreement. City council is requested to hold a public hearing regarding the $10 million issuance of conduit bonds for Nexus for the purchase of the Cambia Hills facility to be operated under the terms of the conditional use permit for the use of this property. At the conclusion of the public hearing, city council is requested to consider approval of resolution 2023-40, as attached in exhibit A, or exhibit one of your packet, and documents relating thereto is exhibited in attachments 225. City bond counsel Dorsey developed these documents on behalf of the city, endorses approval of the same, and is here to answer any questions upon receiving comments from the public at the public hearing.
Okay, so we're opening the public hearing, and anybody who'd like to speak, please step up to the mic. State your name and address, please, if you will.
Jeff Frye, 1635 207th Lane, Northeast. With the bonding that you're doing, if they default on that, does that bond, are those bonds going to fall back against the city people?
Oh, we've been assured that they won't, that's the nature of conduit bonding, but would you like to speak more on that, or?
A great question, and mayor, you are correct. It is not pledged as a credit of the city. What the city is doing as an issuer, however, is serving as a conduit and allowing it to be tax-exempt, and as a result, that lowers the cost, as you've heard, to the ultimate recipient who has to pay those bonds. But again, to restate, not one cent of the city would be pledged to payment of those bonds at any time, even in an event of a default.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good question.
What about the school district?
Oh, please come to the mic.
My name is Dave Kiefer, 19056 Jackson Street. What about the school district? If, if these bonds are being put on this, through the school district, or however they stated it, what about the school district then? Or, because the taxpayers are who pays for the school district?
So, another great question. Do we have public finance counsel here? Great. So I, I have dealt with a lot of general obligation bond financing, as well as revenue bond and conduit bond financing and so forth, but really, when it comes down to really what are the financial implications with respect to the issuer, and the issuer here would be the city of East Bethel, as well as those affiliates such as the school district, or even Nexus, the ultimate recipient of them and so forth. This is where you really want to go to the absolute expert on this issue, so I'm going to defer that your excellent question, very apt question, on to bond counsel, which is with Dorsey. And if she could proceed forward so we could get you on the mic?
Why don't you have a seat right over there? We have a mic work in there.
Sir, you can stay right there.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure you realized I was not dodging your question, I just want to put it in the best hands.
My name is Rhonda Scobie, I'm with Dorsey and Whitney, and I represent the city as bond counsel on this financing. And to your question about the school district, if the borrower defaults on these bonds, it doesn't flow to the school district. There would be a mortgage on the property, and that property would be used to pay the bonds. The reason the school district comes in is because the students at the program, as I think folks on the council are aware, are entitled to a free public education, which means that the school district would provide that education. And there would be an agreement, and I can't speak in as much detail as the borrower can to the state of negotiations of that agreement. But the program costs get, I don't want to say passed on, but the program costs through the lease, that, that's why we start talking about the school district, right? So if the bonds are defaulted on, if the bonds aren't paid, that never goes to the school district.
Yeah, because the city doesn't have a really good record when it comes to this type of thing. They, they cosigned years ago for the Castle Towers Mobile Home Park, which is now, I believe it's Greystone or something now. But they took, they, they cosigned for a loan for the owner of the trailer park, and he went bankrupt, and the city ended up owning the trailer park. And so it's, yeah, it's very worrisome.
That sounds like a different type of financing than what's at issue here.
Sure it was, but it's still the city of East Bethel, but.
Sure.
That's why I was a little concerned.
And that was, that was actually court ordered, that the city had to do that?
Right, but it still was not a good thing to do as a city. I mean, that's.
It's really important, and it's our core responsibility to the residents who elect us, is to do the best due diligence we can.
Right.
Before we make decisions. That's on us.
Right.
And we, we all take it seriously.
And then the other thing was, you know, Cambia Hills, it didn't even last a year in there. You know, what happens when, if Nexus does the same routine as Cambia, Cambia Hills? You know, what happens to, then, then we have to sell the building to pay those bonds?
Well, it's my understanding that Nexus has a very different plan to achieve the, the same services that Cambia. First off, they have different, they would be starting off different with different staffing people and different lower student population, so they, they have a very different plan, and Cambia just fell.
That's what we were told with Cambia Hills when it came into our city.
Well.
Same thing was told us, it was shoved down our throat and said, oh, they're going to do a great job, it's going to be a great thing for the community, it's going to be great for the young people and stuff like that, and then it wasn't.
And then we had a pandemic that caused staffing issues.
Well, that wasn't a pandemic, though, it was, Cambia Hills wasn't following state regulations to run the facility. And they, there was, there was young people who were injured because of it. There was a suicide attempt with a pair of scissors, you know? And so I guess one of the other concerns I have is, is if Nexus does take over the building, are they going to have a, better, better guidelines for their, their staff than Cambia Hills? Because these are young people that are in, in turmoil, and they need guidance. They don't need somebody just to let them do whatever they want. You know, we had people, we had three young ladies escape from that, well, there was many escapes, but one where they stole a vehicle. but one where they stole a vehicle and drove it down to Minneapolis, you know, stuff like that. They, when Cambia Hills came in, we asked that they would, they would hire their own security. And, oh, no, no, they don't need that. But the sheriff's department had told me specifically that they had many, many, many calls there. And so then our cost of, of public safety goes up too. So these are concerns of mine. I just, I wanted to bring them forward because.
Your concerns are legitimate. It's a difficult business.
Right.
I mean, there's no way to say it any other way. It's a tough business.
Hopefully, the council will, will, you know, talk to them about hiring their own security, you know, so this stuff doesn't happen again.
Well, we intend to, again, do the due diligence, and I have a folder about that thick of background on Nexus. I've been studying it with the help of an East Bethel resident. We've been doing research on the company and have quite a bit of information put together.
They did that with Cambia Hills too. I'm sorry to say it, but they did. They went through all that with Cambia Hills and it.
Well, it took me, with the Hills Corporation, I think it was about fifteen minutes of Google research and I could see something was wrong with that company. So I don't know who did the research, but they weren't, they weren't digging real hard.
Well, I, I guess with, you know, you all, you're elected officials, and I hope that you'll do your due diligence to protect the taxpayers of East Bethel through this whole thing and the residents around at Cambia Hills. Because it wasn't done with Cambia Hills. So hopefully Nexus will be a different, different treatment center. I'm praying it is because, you know, that, a treatment center is needed here. But let's do it where it doesn't, you know,
Turn around and bite us.
negatively affect the residents around there and, and our school district or whatever else, you know, the financial part of it.
No, you raise valid concerns.
Thank you.
I'm Sharon Johnson, two zero two four one highway sixty-five. And I'm just wanting to speak in favor of the conduit bond. I think we, the state needs this facility. For me, I'm satisfied that there's no little risk, whatever, to the city financially through the conduit bond, at least from what I've heard from the presentations. As for on social media, there's some issues about lost opportunity taxes. I think that's very minimal also. I mean, somebody put out there that there was three hundred thousand dollars in lost, lost taxes for the city a year, and I think that's overstated for sure. But even if it was, it would be twenty-five dollars per resident. I'm in for twenty-five dollars a year for this facility to go buy, even if we do lose taxes. I don't think that's a big deal at all. The security issue that this gentleman was talking about, I think, is really a concern and it just needs to be addressed. And I know that you guys will do a lot of due diligence. I'm very trusting of that. And I think it's a moral issue too for the city that we need to try to help the youth with mental health. Money, to me, is not as important as the fact that we try to help them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Gentlemen in the back there?
Hi, my name is Joe Ryder, one nine two zero seven Staple Street. From what I've surmised of the opening of this facility, our community will pay up to a hundred and thirty-two thousand a year to rent classroom space. So that'll fall directly on the district. Also, with the new home, hold harmless rules from the state, it's not known whether ISD fifteen will receive reimbursement from students from home districts. So we may get an additional cost for special ed for this facility. For the research on this property, the property is currently assessed around four point one million dollars, which is, I think Brummer Bank is paying about two hundred thousand dollars a year in commercial taxes. The actual value of the property is twenty-six million dollars. So assessed correctly, that property should take in about two million dollars in commercial taxes.
You mean property taxes?
In, in property taxes. On top of that, in review of what this facility is, it's a, it's a five oh one C three nonprofit. There are three conditions which will qualify it to not have to pay property taxes. One is it's a government facility. The second one is, is it, if it is an educational facility. And then the third is, is if it is a charity. This is, this doesn't qualify for any of those three. This is a private hospital. So I would like to call the conditions around the pilot maybe invalid. Currently.
Just to clarify, pilot, the pilot agreement is payment in lieu of taxes. So the entity that doesn't pay property taxes pays some money to the city therein to help defray the cost of providing city services to them. I just learned that recently myself.
Thank you. Yeah, so the previous owner, owner agreed to a pilot of forty-five hundred dollars a year if they made a profit. But again, I don't believe that this organization qualifies for the non, non-taxation rights to that property. Also, we're missing, I wasn't able to find it, but I've heard from other residents that the previous owner agreed to pay building or agreed to pay sewer and water charges to hook up to our sewer and water. And those liabilities may not have been fully paid for. Additionally, members of the road commission stated that that facility agreed to pay for the road to be built in front of the facility, and I don't believe that that was fully paid for as well. I did post on social media that this may increase taxes twenty to fifty dollars. But if it is true that this property should be assessed at twenty-six million dollars, the opportunity cost is looking more like three to four hundred dollars per resident. It's very high cost of allowing a commercial entity in without having them pay their due taxes. And that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to offer one comment. The Joe statement is all the utilities bills have been paid. We have Rob Fugley from Certus back here who's a receiver, and the special assessments on the road construction and water and sewer are up to date. And if this property is sold, that balance will be paid off in full at the time of settlement.
Okay, what are the arrears right now?
There are no, there are no arrears.
There are none.
There are two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars still owed on the special assessment, but that's got another eight years to be paid off.
For the road construction?
That counts the road and the water and the sewer.
Oh, okay.
So are they paying it this whole time or is that where it ended?
No, it's been paid the whole time. I talked to Mr. Fugley last week and confirmed that those payments had been made.
Those are just the monthly charges?
It's, yeah, it's actually an annual charge, so it's, they get it twice a year as a special assessment on their tax bill. Even though they are tax exempt, they do get a tax bill which does have the special assessment amounts.
Anybody else?
I'm Ruth Larson, eighteen four forty Jackson Street, really close to the site. I think we all agree, we know that there's a need for these kids. But I'm also worried about our school district. How are, how, I know that there is a shortage of staff already at our school district, and the new people coming in say that they're, well, the last I heard it was twenty-two, twenty-five an hour. I do not know if our staff at nine six, or no, for District fifteen are getting paid that. And I'm afraid that might even draw more of our special ed over to that place. So that's one of the things I'm worried about. I'm also wondering about the seven million from Anoka County. Is that included with our thing of being, we're not liable for it?
Yes.
Then Anoka County is too, okay. Another thing was the taxes. I do believe everyone's taxes will be going up. Now, does that mean our city, even though we have kids in St. Francis, does the St. Francis School District go up as much as ours? Is it across the board?
It's for the entire school district.
So everyone would be paying, St. Francis people would be paying and we would be paying, okay. I'm very concerned about the students. I hope you have, the staff has well-trained people. Mental health is really a serious, serious thing. If you don't have the right staff, it's going to fall apart. I worked with a school district in special ed. I was a para. We were one of the well-est paid special ed programs, and that's why I'm concerned about the, the St. Francis School District. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Bazanson, two two three three seven Quincy. I've heard a lot of hearsay and rumor thrown out about how Cambia Hills went down. I think that that probably needs to be corrected. I don't have the information to be able to correct that, but I know people who are friends of mine who have worked there, are East Bethel residents, and Cambia Hills might have had a bad business plan, but that is not necessarily a reflection on Nexus. I will say that I had my doubts about Nexus itself after sitting through the first meeting and hearing about it. So I, I'm from the little town of Wakan up on the south end of Lake Mille Lacs. I have a neighbor that worked at Nexus Academy. This is not Nexus Academy. I did talk to Karsten Anderson, again, I know him through some mutual friends of mine, and asked him, would you go talk to the Onemia Superintendent? And all I can say is if Karsten was still on board after talking to the Onemia Superintendent, obviously, his fears and worries that he voiced in this chamber about the effect that it would have on the St. Francis School District must have gone away because I don't see where he, where he has an objection. Like I said, a lot of misinformation to me was strange arithmetic. And Brian was exactly right. I was not on the council. The reason that East Bethel had to, didn't have to, we had the opportunity to take back Castle Towers because we had issued the bonds. Yes, it had gone back on tax forfeit. It was either take it back or get nothing for it. And the reason that I wasn't on the council, the reason that that was foisted on us by the courts was because they had some, they just walked down the wrong path for a long time. Is that a fair statement, Brian? You were, I know you were.
Really, I mean, this is kind of off the track here.
But, so personally, I don't see where there is a risk to the city. I think that there is going to be a, it'll be a benefit to the community. These are not kids that are adjudicated. If you don't understand the difference between a medical referral and an adjudication, you should probably talk to a professional in that field. I'm not. I just built buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Dago, nineteen thirteen, two hundred and thirty-third Avenue Northeast. I just want to speak a little bit as a parent of a child who has significant mental health needs and was in District fifteen. I had, all three of my kids went through that district and the middle one couldn't be served by this district or by St. Francis District. We had to go out of district to get him the care he needed. He had to go to nine sixteen, and St. Francis School District did pay nine sixteen for that service. Not only did they pay for his education, but they paid for transportation of him all the way to White Bear Lake and back every day. And I've got to believe that that cost a lot more than it would to have had him local and had a school teacher from our home district in that building teaching him. Also, when things got significantly bad to the point where he needed inpatient treatment, not only was there nothing around our area to help him, there was nothing in this state to help him. He had to go spend nine months in a facility in Wisconsin. This is something that is so needed in our community and that I just, it sounds like there is no risk. It sounds like even when Cambia Hills went under, did the city pay anything? Did the, did the taxpayers pay anything?
No, Cambia Hills, it was privately owned and there's some misconceptions that the city had some ownership in the building and the property of the project, but they did not. The building is privately owned.
So when that facility went under, it didn't affect the citizens of East Bethel financially?
Correct.
And it doesn't sound like Nexus will affect the cities, city of East Bethel financially. So it sounds like, you know, this is, we need it. We need it. We should do it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have another question. What benefit does the city of East Bethel get out of this program?
It's a very good question.
Number one is we get to reopen a vacant building. One of the worst things you can have for economic development is vacant buildings. Number two, it would bring approximately ninety jobs with, I think, instead of payroll of over five million dollars. It's part of a process whereby it was originally thought this might be the beginning of trying to develop some type of a medical-based segment of our economy. But this facility here, there might be other secondary businesses that could supply or work with this, with Cambia at the times. The other thing is that it's a beautiful facility. It does facilitate our economic development program and marketing. And I guess the final thing is that it shows that, you know, we're trying to have progressive type facilities in the city of East Bethel, and I think this is a good statement for our community.
The last, we were supposed to give eight million. Did we ever, what did we get from them?
That was their estimated payroll. They didn't pay any taxes because they were tax exempt. They did enter into a pilot program, which is, Kevin said, is paid in lieu of taxes, in which they started out with an agreement to pay forty-five hundred dollars if their revenues were a hundred and three percent. Of course, they never did reach that because they were only open for about nine months. So as far as anything revenue-wise, we didn't get anything from Cambia Hills. We just got these other things that are a benefit to the community with the jobs. If people work there, they're going to stop at convenience stores and buy some gas. Or if we get a restaurant, they may stop and buy a sandwich. So it also has a potential multiplier effect in the community to take those dollars, put them in local hands so they can turn over more than one time.
Are we going to get the five million?
Where do you get, what's, the five million dollars is the projected payroll for the ninety people that would work there, as I understand it. And I'll let Margaret or Michelle or Scott speak more to that. They can answer that question better than I can.
Is there anybody else who wants to come up and speak?
I would like to, but I want to make sure the community is spoken first.
Yeah. Anybody else of residents? Come on up, sure.
Um, thank you. I'm Dr. Michelle Murray and I'm the CEO of Nexus Family Healing. And do you want my address too?
Just your city.
Okay, uh, Champlin.
Scott McGuire, CFO of Nexus on Minneapolis.
Um, first of all, congratulations, Mayor Lewis. I'm being the mayor and thank you for everybody's comments. And I do wanna comment on some really specific things. But before I get into the specific things that I had planned, I just wanna address some of the concerns that folks have that are being expressed. I will be honest, this is a difficult business. Mental health with youth with serious issues, with lots of trauma, sometimes brain issues that get in the way of effective functioning is challenging and it is a very hard business. We are not gonna come and promise that it's always gonna be smooth sailing, that we're not gonna have challenging kids that we're working with, that we're not gonna have staff that get upset and decide not to come back to work the next day. That happens. We are responsible for training our staff, which we will do. It's, and it's a hard job for staff to learn how to do. It takes a lot of time. We're dealing with human lives. So, just know that there's not a perfect science here. But we've been in this business since nineteen seventy-two, doing these very services. So, it is the backbone of our business and what we do. We are gonna try to be as exceptional neighbors as we possibly can. We will partner with any other businesses or any other entities and other stakeholders to the tenth, eleventh, twelfth degree to make sure that we are good neighbors to be in your city. There's some other things that came up. I wanted to be really clear that the kids that we are serving, this is not a detention. So, there's a different path that kids go to. If they're court-charged for crimes, then they're gonna go the path of juvenile detention. That's not what this is. That's usually a locked facility. This is a mental health arm. Those kids can be very challenging. It doesn't change the issues of what we have to address. But these are not juvenile court-ordered kids. These are mental health kids that are either there voluntarily or because the counties and the state needs to help the families get the right help. I know that there's been concern about us taking staff from schools. Teachers, we are not gonna be running a school, okay? The school district would have to run the school wherever they do that and however they do that. So, we will not be competing for teachers unless they want to stop teaching and become mental health counselors, okay? That's a very different work and lower pay than what teachers make. I think some of the concern is will we steal the paras? Well, that's certainly not in our control. It's certainly not our intent to come in and try and take other workers. But I can tell you, my husband's a para and he's also worked in the mental health residential facilities as such as this. And even though he makes less, he would not go back to working holidays, evenings, weekends, and the summer times. So, I just want to state that for paras to leave the school, they would have to change their entire career in how they work. Because it's evenings, it's overnights, it's weekends, it's holidays, it's summers. And that's a very different lifestyle. So, it's pretty rare for us to actually get paras. Usually, the reverse happens. Historically, we lose our staff to paras because they're much easier jobs. So, just so you know from our history, you know, we will have to train the staff. We certainly have every intent of taking care of the kids that we serve to do everything that they need to do. And I do want to speak for Cambia a little bit, even though they're not here to represent themselves. We've been in the field with Cambia for years here in the state of Minnesota. And Cambia did the best that they could to build this facility. There are a lot of things that were happening at the state level with this level of care. Minnesota has not seen this level of care until the last about five years. It's been a learning curve for the state of Minnesota. Cambia was promised a lot of things about how it would, the state would be back behind them. They were limited by a cap of a rate that the state was operating off of at the time that Cambia got into the business. And that cap had also kinds of billing things connected to it. They thought that they could get insurance payments and so forth. So, they were operating at a very different time than when we're coming in. The state has learned an awful lot about the psychiatric residential treatment facility in the last five years. We have been, and the reason why Nexus did not get into that book of business yet in this state, we operate PRTFs in two other states, was because we knew that the state didn't have the stuff figured out that needed to do for success. But the state, we have been fighting with our other providers in the state, advocating, I should say, with the state officials to make a lot of changes in legislative around the rates and around insurance issues and staffing issues and so forth. And they've come a long way. The state's been a pretty good partner in learning the, some of the mistakes. Our rate is drastically higher than what Cambia got because they have now lifted the cap on the rates. And now, we're able to charge a rate that actually pays for the direct allowable expenses. Cambia was not allowed to do that. The other thing that impacted them was the fact that the state was very confused about the regulations that they wanted PRTFs to follow. And somebody had made a comment about how they were following the wrong regulations. Well, it was because they were, the state was still learning and they didn't quite know if they should be following the Department of Health regulations or regular Department of Human Services. And the state has figured that stuff out now for providers. So, there's a lot more clarity about what regulations they're accountable to. And then, the, uh, there was another issue with Cambia too. Well, maybe it'll come back to me. Anyhow, so the state has made a lot of different allowances for, oh, insurance, I'm sorry. The providers were told that insurance would pay for kids and that was not the case. Insurance under Cambia's watch was refusing to pay for these services because a PRTF is different than other residential treatment in the state because the state wasn't used to the PRTF. Well, now, legislation just passed that insurance now has to pay for this level of mental health. They cannot deny it. So, again, very different path for Cambia, a lot of things. And then, the pandemic certainly did not help them in any way because it really affected the staff. Staffing is an issue for every company right now. We're no different. The school's no different. If any of you run businesses, you know how hard it is to get staff. Is it gonna be perfect for us? No. We're gonna have to have the same challenges of offering great benefits, opportunities for staff to come work for us. We're gonna have to work hard at that. And hopefully, people will come because they see the mission in the work that they're doing and they wanna be a part of something to help. But we know that that will be hard. I wanna talk about the hold harmless with the school. There was still a lot of uncertainty from the St. Francis School District about how they, they're under a grandfathered billing, this hold harmless. And they were worried that they would not be able to bill the home school districts for the students.
Excuse me, could you explain that better, the whole hold harmless thing?
I probably should be careful because I'm not the educator that's billing. What we learned about it, and I can't speak more than this, that there's different ways that the school districts bill for students based on the state. And East Bethel, or I'm sorry, the St. Francis School District is still part of this hold harmless billing. And the school would be better to explain this. But essentially, what it means is rather than being able to bill new revenue coming in, they have to spend down what they already have in order to bill new. So, they were worried that by bringing more students in, they wouldn't be able to bill the home school district to bring in revenue, that they would just have to pay for it out of pocket. And so, we met extensively with the school. We got other partners on the phone that have this. And what they have found out from the state educator, they, and actually, St. Francis already does this with another residential entity through VOA. If you're familiar with, they have a program that they bill. For the regular ed students, they are actually able to bill the home school district for those charges. And they actually are at a little bit of a premium compared to regular education. Now, that's for regular education students, all right? So, it has nothing to do with their hold harmless. They can bill the count, the child's home district for that. So, it's not at a cost to the school district to educate the regular education students. About fifty percent of our kids, we're projecting, we don't know this, we're projecting about fifty percent will be regular education. The other fifty percent would most likely be special ed. Now, that, they will still have to go into their hold harmless formula. But the amount that they have potentially to bill for the regular ed could offset the special ed. So, it's not this drastic cost to the school district that they had initially thought. The biggest cost that they were concerned about was when they had Cambia, they were being billed, I think, a four-hundred-and-forty thousand lease for all the school. That's because they were gonna use all the classrooms. They had sixty-plus kids that they were projecting. We had worked out a different agreement with the district that it would be only up to a hundred-and-twenty-three, a hundred-and-thirty about annually. And that's once we're full at our thirty-eight kids, if they use all the classrooms. They don't have to use all the classrooms. They were kind of looking at that. And that's just leased space. So, it's a huge drastic reduction from what they had experienced before. The partnership that we've been doing with Superintendent Anderson and his folks is we've introduced them to some other school districts that can do the education if Karsten does not wanna take that on. He is in communication with them. It looks like nine-sixteen has such a waitlist for kids that they would not be an option. But there are some other school districts that are options or intermediate, I should say, co-ops. So, he's looking into that. In terms of, let's see, Scott, I wanted you to speak to the payroll, just to confirm that.
So, the payroll, I think you said a five million annually? It's twenty million. So, it's a considerable amount of payroll that's gonna be coming into this area.
I have a question about the school part of that. So, would kids stay in the facility for school and then a teacher would come and teach them?
Ideally, that they don't have to do it that way. And that's really not our decision. It would really be up to the school district how they wanna do that. Because we are not allowed to educate them. We don't have, I mean, the school district is responsible for doing that. So, they have to make the decisions that best meets their, how they operate. They have the option of paying for lease and keeping the kids there and bringing the teachers in. They have an option of busing the kids out elsewhere. What we're understanding is they do not have the facility to do that. They would prefer to do it there. I know the district would prefer to have a co-op do it, so that's why they're talking to other partners.
Could you expand on the comment that I heard? You mentioned it two times, these, these. What does that indicate?
Okay, so we have, well, this building, we didn't build this building. But this building has, I forget how many classrooms, up to ten?
Ten.
Ten classrooms in it. That when they built the building, they purposely brought school people in and said, how do you want the space to be if you were to educate? So, they built it to purpose. It's a beautiful design. So, they have these ten classrooms that are physically there for the school. It would not be part of the treatment program. But it's in the same building to help for safety and things like that to keep the kids. And so, then the staff from the school are hired by the district and then they come in and they operate the same education that they would legally get anywhere else.
Well, no, but the...
Excuse me. If you wanna ask questions, can you come up to the mic and state your name and all that? Well, do it in the microphone, okay? So, we can get you on the record, please?
Harry Lottie, two-two-seven-one-three Palisade Street, Northeast. The lease aspect, will the school district be paying that? Or to, basically, so, we're, school district's bringing in staff, educational staff, and they have to pay to use your facility?
Yeah, the state of Minnesota was our main payer.
Okay, but it's kinda funny to me.
I'm gonna answer your question. The state of Minnesota was our payer source. They will not pay us for non-clinical space. So, the school would pay us for their space. The state of Minnesota pays us for where we get clinical activities.
Okay, but the costs, you need me to come up?
Yes, please.
Can I just also add to that? This is the same for the school district right now. If they need to go somewhere to educate, they've gotta pay. They either buy a building or they pay lease. They could use their own space. And they came and looked at the space and they said, well, wow, we could really use this space. And they also know that they can actually rent space for education for them for other reasons, not having anything to do with our kids. That's option to them and they're looking at that because that's a thing that they could do because they need space right now for their education. So, they could go anywhere and just lease space for the school. And then, they build that as part of their charging back the home districts, coming out of there. So, it's no different than how they're doing their building costs now.
Jeff Frye, so the costs that you're incurring are gonna be incurring for these children to come in there and be educated. The taxpayers of this community are gonna be picking up those costs, correct?
It really depends on the child's, not necessarily. Because it depends on how the school and the funds that they have. So, regular education students...
The school funds are coming from the taxpayers.
Well, but they can bill outside of your county for those kids. So, your county's not paying for regular ed of the students that come from another school district. The school district bills that home county for that education.
Okay, so they're gonna, initially, are, we're supposed to get reimbursed?
You're supposed to get reimbursed?
For the cost of these children that are coming from other places.
For regular ed.
Right, that we, well, what about special?
The special ed has to go into their hold harmless. But the revenues that they bring in for the regular ed can go towards that or they can use their billing mechanisms that they have now for that.
And the billing for the special ed comes from where?
That comes from a state formula that they're assigned, how much, any district, and it's the same for all districts, of how much they can build for special ed. It has a state formula. They are billing the state, but with their hold harmless, the thing that the school would be a little more worried about is because they have a hold harmless, they already have pockets of money to spend in this district. So, they can't get new revenues until they spend it. So, that has to do with the special ed.
I don't know about the rest of you, but I could use some more clarification on the hold harmless thing. The reason I asked the question is because there's another hold harmless phrase that's applied to the bonds. And that's where if we use our ten-million-dollar-per-year bonding limit, if we wanna do something else and we have to, it results in a higher interest rate that the borrower on the bonds that we, well, long story short, it's about as confusing as this one.
Can you explain that piece? You should be able to explain the...
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. As the mayor was mentioning, there is a hold harmless in the bonds. So, these bonds would be issued as bank-qualified bonds, which means banks in particular can invest in this type of bond at a tax-exempt rate. This type of bond is only available to small issuers. It defines small issuers as a municipality that issues less than ten million dollars in a year. So, this issuance will use the full East Bethel ten-million amount. The city has no plans, as far as I'm aware, to issue any other bonds in 2023. But if something happened, if there, a tornado came through and you needed to redo all your roads or something. There was a situation where the city did need to issue bonds because these bonds are being designated as bank-qualified. The remaining bonds, the new bonds, the city's emergency bonds, could not be issued as bank-qualified. And they would be potentially issued at a higher interest rate than they could otherwise be issued if they were BQ. Now, the bond documents include hold harmless language. So, any difference, any increase in interest rate that the city has to pay because it could not issue its bonds on a bank-qualified basis, that cost also gets passed to the borrower. You'll hear me say that a lot. Every single cost involved with this gets passed to the borrower. My fees, if there are city audit fees, if the IRS comes knocking and says there's a problem, all of that gets passed to the borrower.
Which would be Nexus?
Nexus.
Which would be Nexus, exactly.
Yes.
I'd like to say one more thing. Somebody had asked a question about what's the benefit of East Bethel and Jack did a very nice job articulating the benefits.
Can you speak a little closer to the mic, please?
Sorry, somebody had asked what the benefits were to East Bethel for this project and Jack did a nice job articulating that. There was one piece that was left out and that is that as the borrower, we could... There was one piece that was left out and that is that as the borrower, we could pay, we would pay up to one hundred thousand dollars at the city of East Bethel for them being the conduit of this deal. Okay, so that's a fee they can charge up to a hundred thousand dollars to us that we would pay to the city of East Bethel.
Do you want to, do you want to come up here, please? We're just recording it, that's why we want to use the mics, so.
You were saying about the special ed from the homeschooling fix? Yes, the school districts receive the special ed money. But I, did I understand you say that, yeah, what's the other one, the health then?
The, with, with. You're talking about the, the regular ed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At, at your school or at the health center?
Oh, yeah.
But it would really, there is more money coming in from the special ed from the state than there is from the regular.
Well, I'm not an educator, so I think it would be better for the school district to talk about this. But actually, schools really struggle with special ed, even though there's a higher rate. The way that it comes in doesn't always work penny to penny. And that's, the special ed rate has more to do with the hold harmless and the funds that the district's already getting for that.
Well, I just, I just know that the homeschool district for special ed is a lot higher than the regular ed.
Yes, but they just can't bill back to the homeschool district for the special ed the way that they can for the regular ed. So, so what they can do is they can bill the homeschool districts of these kiddos and get that revenue so they're not taking it out of their own pocket. And they do that right now with VOA. So what I would like to do, just, just from hearing everybody's concerns, I wanted to kind of address that knowledge that we have. But I really do want to make some statements about what we're here to do today. We are here today to seek a positive city council vote for our loan from the city of East Bethel being a bond conduit so that we can require, or so that we can acquire a reduced interest rate when we purchase the building. So I want to be really clear that the vote today is not about us coming here and doing the programming or about how this is going to impact the school. This is about us getting your support to do the conduit bond financing so that we can get a lower interest rate. In 2018, the city of East Bethel already supported the building of this site to be built, specifically to provide mental health services to youth. You have already done that. The building's been built. The city also had many investors who invested in this city to build this building and ultimately invested in your entire city to have this building built. At that time, the city issued a conditional use permit, which is attached to the land and the building to be used for its designated purpose. We have every intent of following all the rules and regulations regarding that conditional permit. But that is already in use, connected to the building. Nexus Family Healing is pleased to be able to continue the mission that was intended when the building was built, to provide much-needed mental health services for youth in Minnesota. But to be very clear to the council members, the vote tonight does not affect any part of the plans to restore the building to its intended use. Those plans are proceeding. We have every intent to purchase the building. We have every intent to come and return the building for its purpose to serve kids with mental health. This vote has nothing to do with us coming and buying a building and/or providing services. It is just simply about saving us money, the state taxpayers' money, and the school potential money if they do end up leasing classrooms from us. Our target date is to accept the first youth by December first and that process is unfolding according to plan and is unrelated to the questions in front of the council tonight. All the components of financing are rate from the state to, to get paid to do the service. All of the necessary permits and applications are all submitted and are in place for us to proceed. When the program is restored, the local school, school district will need to provide the education. And they have said that they will provide that. Or they will find another district to provide the educational services per state education law. Nexus is working in partnership with Superintendent Anderson and his staff to find the best option for this educational program. But this is completely unrelated to the matter in front of the council tonight. The school district understands that we will be operating a program with or without your vote. We are going to be operating this program. And they are committed to providing the education and working with us to find all of the possible solutions. The city council is simply being asked to vote on the city being the bond conduit to allow us to secure tax exempt financing. There is no financial risk to the city of East Bethel. Voting no means that our costs increase by three point five million dollars, which will in fact result in higher costs to the education system. It will make their lease go up because we have to have a way to pay that three point five million. It will also increase the taxpayers of the state of Minnesota. Because the taxpayers of Minnesota, not just your city, pay for these services to be done. A positive city council vote is not a vote to endorse us coming. We are going to run the program. We have every intent to purchase the building. The vote has nothing to do with us coming or not coming. We will be providing the service. The vote of a positive is about endorsing the city to receive up to a hundred thousand dollars cash payment in fee to use however the city wants. And it is about taxpayers in the state of Minnesota saving tax dollars. And it is about having a more reasonable lease cost to the school to provide the schooling. As the conduit financing allows Nexus to pay less interest, it will lower everybody's costs, including how much the lease for the educational space will cost the district. This savings does not go into our pockets, I need to be very clear. We are not asking for this reduction because it's going to be more money for us. We cannot make a profit on this business. We are not allowed because of the federal dollars that get used and the state dollars that get used. It is simply going to turn into more of the state having to pay for this and our tax dollars paying for it. The only, but, the only entities that make money on you saying no are the banks. They're the ones that are going to make money by saying no. Nobody else is going to make money on that. This vote is about saving taxpayers' money. It's about the school, it's about saving the school district money. It is about the city receiving some easy funds through the fee that they can charge us. This savings does not go into our pockets. If we do not receive the conduit financing, the additional expense goes into increased interest, which just again goes into the hand of the bankers. One of our concerns is somewhere along the way, when it got word that we were planning to come in and do programming, people seemed to have intertwined the district's concerns about educating the youth and finding staff and all that which is legitimate. It's hard to get staff nowadays. But they seem to intertwine that problem with the purpose of this vote. We're going to come provide the programming and we have every intent of purchasing the building. The school has to educate the kids. This vote has nothing to do with that. It's just simply about letting us save the money rather than going into the banker's pockets. The city of East Bethel gets a fee. We have lower costs to the school if they rent the space and the taxpayers pay less to pay for the mental health services. When the program reopens, the youth will be the students of St. Francis School District. The district can build the youth's home district for regu-, regular education. We estimate that to be about fifty percent, so that will not be on their backs, which can help cover expenses for the special education students, estimated, estimated to be the other half. We are also starting here, which were some of concerns about, worried about us not being successful like Cambia Hills. I think I covered earlier how the environment is extremely different than it was for Cambia Hills. We have very, very tight financials around this model and around the rate that we're getting to pay for the expenses. And Cambia Hills did not have the fortunate opportunity to, to charge the right rate. And again, we will partner with all of the community stakeholders. We will be good neighbors. We will try to address people's concerns. But I just want to state that your concerns about us operating the programming has nothing to do with the vote that is before the council. You are simply voting on a conduit financing. We are going to come and do the programming and fulfill the mission of the East Bethel property regardless of what the vote is. We are asking you to save everybody money and for you to charge the fee that you can to benefit your city. We encourage everyone to not combine the issues or concerns that do not actually have anything to do with one another. The educational services will be provided in a timeline for the reopening of this program of Minnesota youth are not affected by the vote tonight. But it is an opportunity for East Bethel to receive a payment for supporting our efforts to keep all costs as low as possible, including the cost of education for the youth once they arrive. So again, in summary, I know I'm repeating myself, but I really am trying to make it very clear because it seems to be that there's a lot of issues that are intertwined that have nothing to do with each other. Voting yes on us, on you supporting and partnering with us on the conduit financing means that the city of East Bethel will receive up to a hundred thousand dollar payment to use however you want. You will be saving taxpayers' dollars in the state because the state will have to pay less for these services in the per diem that we will be charging. And you will lower the cost to the school if they choose to lease the space. You will put the funds back into the staff and investments. If we have money that's allowable to spend, we can pay people more. We can do other things in the community to help with that. Voting no means denying the city a hundred thousand dollar possible fee that they can charge us. It means Minnesota taxpayers will pay more to provide these services. And it will, if the school has to rent space to provide school, it will make their lease costs go up more than the hundred and thirty that we were talking about. We will have to pay three point five more million in interest and the only one that benefits from that are the bankers. So voting no, you are just approving the bankers making more money. And that is simply our statement. We hope that you will partner with us. We hope that you will accept us. We will try to be good stewards. We will try to be good neighbors and good partners. Please help us make this more financially viable. We are a nonprofit. We cannot make profits off of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Being a good neighbor, that's a keeper.
I'm sorry?
Being a good neighbor, you said, you guys, do you guys provide any security at all to keep the children safe and to keep in, contained in there rather than running, running wild?
You know what, I'm actually, I forgot to write that on my paper when you brought that up. We are actually not, by, by regulation in the state of Minnesota, we cannot hire security. We actually tried that in another one of our facilities. And we tried to get waivers, we tried to get the state to see us doing that and we were not allowed to do that. They would not, because this is a treatment center for mental health, they did not want any kind of co-mingling and mixing of any kind of security presence with mental health, so. But what we do is we train our staff to do the, the proper procedures. We will work with the police department about the impacts that we have for any kind of security. We have twenty-four hour awake staff that watch the kids. The ratios have a lot to do with security too. We have an intention of running a three, uh, three kids to one staff. And we will only have up to thirty-eight kids in this program versus the sixty that was originally designed. They would have, most of them would have their own single rooms, which also helps with security as well.
Would you say the three to one, or do you count all the staff in the building or just the?
No, we're talking about the, not the classrooms. We're not in charge of the classrooms. We don't, we don't do the classrooms for that. We're talking about during the treatment hours of when we are doing treatment and twenty-four hours of sleeping. All through the day, we have three kids to one staff. And it's not the people in the building, it's actually the staff that are hired to be working and supervising directly with the kids. On the overnights, I think, Margaret, what is it, one to six? One to six.
Does it count therapists?
Yeah, no.
Everybody?
It doesn't.
Hard to three to one?
No, no. It's just, it's just the staff that are hired to be youth care professionals that actually work directly with the kids in their programs. That's the three to one ratio. The therapists, the business people, the supervisors, those are all on top of all of that. Nursing, all on top of that.
Okay. Anybody, any other residents here have comments to make about this? Please state your name and your address and.
Hall of Marskurtz, forty-three fifty-six, two-hundredth Lane Northeast. It was a Cambia employee from the beginning to the end. You know, I, there were some things that absolutely happened. But it's unfortunate you didn't hear about the good things that happened. The girl who sexually abused many years of her childhood.
Excuse me, ma'am, can you speak into the mic, please, so you're recorded?
Who engaged in self-harm and with an eating disorder and very ill, who is now in college. The young man who struggled with his parents and relationships, who was able to rebuild those relationships when he was with us. So many stories about these children that suffered, suffered. And that came out better children. And I'm sorry that those are the stories you guys never heard. Because they were loved, the staff cared for them and they did well. And it was very challenging.
Do you follow-ups with them?
No, I don't. I, I don't, I just don't think it's the right thing to do. I know that after a couple of years I could, but, yeah.
There's always good stories.
There, there are, there are. And it, it's unfortunate that the ones that kind of stand out are those negative ones. But there were more wonderful things that happened. Yeah, it, it was, it was the best job I ever had. And I've been in, working in substance use disorder and mental health for over twenty-five years. And it was the most challenging, but it was the best job. And thank you for explaining that, how everything happened there. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're very weird of how that was affected by the virus.
Joe Ryder again, one-nine-two-zero-seven Staple Street. I feel like there's maybe a disconnect about what's being talked about. One is compassionate services that your organization provides. And then the other is how is it going to get paid for? As a planning commission member, there's only two here, so there's no quorum. And I'm only speaking for myself. But the concerns I have are that, for one, the conditional use permit on this facility will need to be completely revised. There, there is no, it's expressly written for Cambia Hills and almost every line it says, "The CUP," or conditional use permit, is only for the sixty-bed Cambia Hills project. Normal course of action is a conditional use permit will go before the planning commission to be considered and then advice will be given to the city council. This hasn't been done yet. I feel like the request for bonding is preceding something that it shouldn't. Additionally, I'd also like to point out that that facility sits on a forty-acre section of prime commercial land. And taxed at the correct rate would bring in the city about two million dollars, which would be a bump of, well, our current budget's about six million. This is the most, the largest facility in our city. And by not paying any taxes, it's going to leave a big gap in, in how we fund other things. Especially since that, that building sits on maybe a ten-acre property. But then thirty, thirty acres is going to be left vacant. So I guess my question is, do you guys plan to pursue continuation of the current payment in lieu of taxes? Or will you operate as a regular commercial facility? You stated that any additional cost will be borne by the state. I guess my, in my position, I would prefer that it's not borne on the residency special, East Bethel and perhaps goes to the state agency that's paying for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to say?
Sharon Johnson, I just want to say that, you know, the vote tonight is on the conduit bond. And as you several times said over, I mean, that's what we're talking about tonight. It's not about whether the city can be there, whether the conditional use permit is. not about whether the city can be there, whether the conditional use, um, permit is valid or not, although Jack has said that it is. Maybe Joe's right, maybe Jack's right, um, but that's not the issue tonight, it's about the conduit bond. I think that's what you should be thinking about.
And as to Joe's comments, I've had discussions with Scott and Margaret, and we are working on looking into revising the pilot program and also making those modifications to the CUP. This was specifically for Cambia Hills, that would be changed to either the property owner or just depending on number of the property. So those things are being looked at as we speak.
Jack just said exactly what I was going to say, answer your question.
Don't you start first with getting everything straight and then talk money? I mean, your staff about...
CUP.
Yeah, you know, and getting, getting whatever...
I, I'll, I'll address that, you know, I, I don't think, number one, that property was never a zone commercial, it was a zone residential. The previous owner wanted to sell the property, they wanted to retire and move, they were moving out of East...
The city approached them.
Ma'am, do you want to come up here to the mic if you want to interact with Jack? Because again, we're trying to get everything on, on the record. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but the city approached our neighbors about selling their property.
We had asked them one time if they were ever interested in selling to contact us. I spoke, uh, with, uh, the property owner after a church meeting one day and told him, you know, if they were ever interested in selling to let us know. And when Cambia came, they'd looked at other sites, and I said, "Well, here's, here's a person that might be interested, why don't you contact them?" So...
So who owns the building?
The building now is in receivership with Certus Financial. The city was never involved in the ownership, it's totally privately owned.
So it's owned by the bank?
It's, no, it's not essentially... Rob, can you address what the ownership is?
My name is Robert Fugley, I work for Certus Financial. Uh, we are the court-designated receiver, uh, for Anoka County Court, 10th District. Receivership is a special case of ownership whereby the default is set aside to have the property returned to a use for its highest and best purpose. Our role in this...
Can you turn to the mic?
I'm sorry, I thought I was. My hearing aids are turned up a little bit, my apologies. Um, so Certus Financial is the court-appointed receiver. Technically, we represent all creditors, uh, so we are agnostic in this process. Our role is to preserve the building and to make certain that the payments are paid as they should be, uh, and to act as a proxy for an owner. Uh, but technically, the building is not owned by anybody right now. It's a special place similar to a bankruptcy, but without, uh, the bankruptcy protection. Is that sufficient?
Kind of a financial limbo, huh?
Uh, very much so. It's a very ambiguous situation.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Anybody else, any members of the council have any questions?
Oh, council should be after public hearing is closed.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Well, being that there's no apparent additional people, we'll close the public hearing. So we should probably entertain a motion, make a motion for approval of Resolution 2023-40 as exhibited in attachment one and documents relating to as exhibited in attachments two through five. Motion's been made, is there a second? I don't know what to do when you don't get a second.
If you don't get a second, the motion dies.
Going once, going twice. Uh, well, motion dies for lack of a second, huh? Can we then have a discussion? Or if that is... If it dies, then you move on to the next agenda item? You can have a second, and then you can have a discussion, and of course, the motion may not pass. Just because you second it does not necessarily mean that you are obligated to vote in favor of the motion. So can I get a second?
I'll second it because I want to talk.
All right. Discussion.
First of all, I've never heard of a company coming in without a conditional use permit in place with this kind of money involved. I'm not saying it's not done, I'm just saying I haven't heard of it. As a council member and speaking for myself, I, I don't feel comfortable, I'll be real honest with you, with being told, "If you do this, if you do this, you can get $100,000 for your city, but I'm going to save 3.5 million dollars for our company over the life of this loan." Or if you don't do it, we're not going to save this money, and it's going to cost you more. I don't know who would feel good in this position. It, it's, it's, it feels uncomfortable if you're doing your due diligence for the city as, as the new mayor likes to talk about. There, there's, there's too many open holes. I know we're talking just about a conduit bond to do this and so forth, but without knowing the actual impact, and I realize there's places like this that are needed, don't get me wrong, they're, they're very needed. But at the same time, I don't feel comfortable sitting up here voting for the residents given a if you do or don't situation. Conditional use permits were put in place to prevent things from coming in and coming in and happening that the residents do not agree with, and, and that's why you have to go get these things. Uh, the current one hasn't been looked at in three years, so it's not up to date, it's supposed to be looked at annually, it's not. Uh, and it's got a, Cambia Hills written over it. We, we can't just fill in the blank or start crossing out names. And mind you, that's, that's my opinion about it, without sending this to, to one of our committees to look at, to have them go through it again, I mean, that's why we have them. I mean, there's too many openings here to just say, "Yes, let's do this because it's going to cost people more money if we don't." That's how I feel about it.
I agree with what Tim's saying. To me, it looks like when I listen to people talk about this, we're putting the cart in front of the horse. Until we have the questions answered that I feel are, especially with Carston Anderson, because I was at the first meeting when he brought up his concerns, and I hear other people making answers for him, and he's not here to answer, so I would just soon hear from him and not have hearsay. But I definitely agree with what Tim is saying also. Residents, I'm looking out for the residents as well. We know that Cambia Hills was a disaster, and we got to be very careful so that doesn't happen again. That's all I got to say.
How much time is needed for this to pass? What, what kind of time, timeframe are we working with?
That would be up to them to tell us.
Does this have to pass tonight? Okay, by, by, by what date would you say that it would, it would need to pass? Thank you.
We intend, we would like, are in our pace to close on this by August 1st in order to have our first client December. If we were to get significantly delayed on that closing on August 1st, we would have to delay our first client into March. And the reason for that is we would not want to hire over the holidays. Okay? So are we talking a couple of weeks?
I, I'm not sure. That's why I'm asking you. That if we table this until the next meeting, Jack, when would this be able to come up again? 26th.
That's fine.
We, if we want to have another public hearing, it can come up on the 26th, it would still give notification time to have this done.
Uh, mayor and the city council, I'm sorry, I, you can close the, uh, public meeting and what you've done and, and basically indicate that the public hearing process for this particular bond, um, consideration, that particular component has been met, and you can table or continue this for further discussion and deliberation. And I believe I'm looking at our public finance bond, bond council, who's also nodding in the affirmative. I've been around the block a little bit myself, so, um, and, and you can go ahead and table it to the 26th.
I wonder if I could ask a question? Is that okay?
You are the mayor.
The mayor.
Yeah, that, that and five bucks will get you a lousy cup of coffee. In the research that I referred to earlier, there, there were issues in the past about event, you know, negative things at Nexus facilities, other people's facilities, and given the business you're in, it didn't surprise me in the least. I would have been surprised if there weren't any. And I certainly didn't expect you to lead with that as a sales point. Okay, so none of that surprised me, but there is one thing that surprised me. And am I, I'm correct in believing that you operate a facility in Austin, Minnesota, right?
Yes.
And you operate a facility in Onamia, Minnesota? That's Mauer County and Malax County respectively. One of the issues that Joe Ryder was talking about, who's on our planning commission, in, in economics, it's the concept of opportunity cost. That's how you measure cost in a weird world of economics, is the cost of what would have been every, everything you turned down to do what you did, you know, the best option you could have had. And that's what he was referring to. And when you're looking at what is arguably 38 acres of prime real estate for light industrial or office buildings or residential, whatever the use, um, they're, they're, again, doing the due diligence, optimizing the value of the people's real estate in, in the East Bethel. How, help me understand something. I've looked at the property tax statements for the facility in Austin and in Onamia, and you're paying property taxes to both of those counties. How is it that this facility won't be paying property taxes? I don't know. I see, I see it written in the pilot agreement, but other than that, what, what is the reason why this would not pay property taxes and those two facilities were, given they're in the same state?
Well, that, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm mystified.
That's, that's a very good question.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. We, we are not certain yet whether or not we will qualify for that, but we do have 501(c)(3) status, and we would go for, uh, the ability to not pay taxes.
Well, what's the, what's the condition that you have to meet or whatever that...
You know, Rob, do you want to help with this one? You, you've got a lot of background on...
Because I just simply don't know, and I'd like to not be ignorant about it.
Uh, in the state of Minnesota, the tax exemption is issued under an IPPC, which is an institution for purely public charity. And there's a series of tests that are required for that, uh, that is approved by the county. So it's approved at the county level. Uh, the PRTF program in the state of Minnesota is by its nature a zero-gain provision in care. So there is no profit motivator for the care provider, uh, which directly means that in Minnesota, PRTFs will be run by not-for-profit organizations. Based on our discussions with Anoka County, and then also as precedent in, uh, other operations in St. Peter, which I believe is in Nicollet County, and in, uh, Duluth, which is, I believe, Carlton or St. Louis, I apologize, St. Louis, St. Louis County. Uh, those PRTFs do not pay, uh, those, pardon me, I should say, they're classified as tax-exempt.
That's, it's all determined by the county.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. We should probably go back to the mic again and all that business, because other, not you, but you. Anybody who wants to ask questions?
He was just asking for that acronym, what that acronym was?
PRTF, Psychiatric Residential Treatment Center.
That's all I wanted to know.
Public hearing is closed, I've been advised.
Could I, could I make two, uh, comments to Councilmember Smith's statements?
Sure, of course.
Um, the first one, the three and a half million dollars of savings to us is, was just mentioned, we don't make profit on this. We have zero profit potential. The three and a half million is actually savings to the taxpayers of Minnesota, not to us. That's, that's not, that's not, those are not savings to us because we're reimbursed to the taxpayers of the state of Minnesota. And then regarding Carston, I know Carston has been, or Mr. Anderson has been invited or has been aware of these meetings. I'm not certain why he hasn't shown up to update the council.
But I asked, I asked Jack earlier, and you did get a copy of his letter dated today.
Just right before we got here, yes, yeah, we did. But I know you said you wanted to hear from him, and we would like to hear from him, too, in front of this audience.
Right, because all I do is hear from you guys saying Carston said this, said that, I want to hear from him.
I understand, and we're not educators.
Otherwise, it's hearsay to me.
Right, so that would be great if we could get Carston to come here on the 26th.
Does that delay still apply for reimbursement that you're talking about, how the state pays it back?
The 18-month thing?
So again, that's not, that's Carston's, that's Carston's, he would, I would want him to answer that. That's, that is not in my wheelhouse.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
So to the motion, uh...
Well, I will, I will make a motion to table this item until the, the next meeting, on the 26th. So that, that allow, will allow time for members of council to address their questions and concerns.
So is that in order, Eric?
Mayor, yes, it is. If there's a second, then you would vote on the motion to table first. If the motion to table passes, then, uh, then that basically overrides the, the other one, and it would be heard on the 26th.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it's our intention, just as an information note, to have the city council seat filled at the meeting on June 26th as a first order of business or one of the first orders of business, so that way it'll be a complete city council that'll be taking it up again. Okay, so item five is the public forum.
I, I believe you still have four D?
Yeah, still got it.
Public hearing, off-sale liquor license.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Eric. Probably helped if I looked at my own agenda.
It, it takes a team.
Public hearing, off-sale liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff has recommended that council conduct a public hearing regarding an off-sale liquor license for Bethel Liquor LLC as required by the East Bethel City Code, Article 3, Intoxicating Liquors, Section 6-55. For notification requirements, the public hearing for this date was published in the Anoka County Union. At the conclusion and close of the public hearing, council will be requested to consider the approval of an off-sale liquor license for Bethel Liquor LLC doing business as Snack Attack Number Four located at 23733 Highway 65 Northeast. The applicant is the new owner of the property, which previously held an identical license. All application materials, completed background checks, and fees have been submitted for the license. Final approval of the license would be contingent on approval of the state commissioner of public safety, approval of council is required prior to the action by the state. Staff recommends the public hearing to receive comments on the off-sale liquor license for Bethel Liquor LLC doing business as Snack Attack Number Four. Once the public hearing is closed and if there are no reasons to deny the license, staff recommends council consider approval of an off-sale liquor license for Bethel Liquor LLC doing business as... of an off-sale liquor license for Bethel Liquor LLC doing businesses Snack Attack Number Four located at two-three-seven-three-three, Highway sixty-five, East Bethel, Minnesota, five-five-zero-one-one.
Thank you, Jack. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Nobody have, nobody has anything to say?
Yes. Jeff Frye, I'm just wondering if you could relay to your roads and see if they could fill the pothole on Ebola Street just south of two-hundred-ninth? It's about that big and about that deep.
How does this relate to a liquor store?
No liquor store, no liquor store, just.
I'm just having fun with you. That's what the public hearing is. Did you get that, Jack?
It's been noted, we'll take care of it.
Okay. Anybody have anything they want to say about the liquor store being granted a license? Okay, well, I guess we'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the off-sale liquor license for Bethel Liquor LLC.
Second.
All those in favor?
We're going to have a discussion.
Oh, do you, do we have a discussion?
We need to have one, or, or after a motion's been made and seconded, then you ask discussion.
I was just testing you guys. So is there any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. Can, can we somehow get these permits or forms and these things we're approving filled out? I mean, we've got, I can understand a couple of things being scratched out, but we're reading, you know, your report on top where it says it's located. I got a business mailing address in, in Avon, description of license and, and where it's going to be doing business once in a while. I'm just seeing a lot of different things in here that I have no problem approving this. I would just like to be more precise, so I don't have to look all over the place. I mean, we've got a lot of blank spots.
If you want a copy of the application, we can certainly provide that.
Well, I don't want to change a copy of an application. It took me two months to change the chicken ordinance. I just want to, I just want it filled out a little bit better, so there's more information.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, because it, also too, Jack, you said that this has to be approved by the state?
Yes.
Before we can approve?
No, we, we approve it, and then final approval is done by the state. So once we approve it, we send it to the state, and they issue their final approval.
That's it.
Okay, that it for the discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Now we're at the public forum. Item five on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, the reason I brought that up is because when you guys go up to the liquor store and get your bottles and come back, take the bottle, break the bottles.
So it's good for business with liquor store, yeah. See, we're always looking out for the businesses. Don't, don't fill that pothole. We had, the list for the public forum was two folks who wanted to talk about bonds, so. Did anybody, was anybody here actually for the public forum? I guess not. Okay, well, that's it. Public forum's closed, I guess. So we're on to item six, the consent agenda. Anybody got anything they want to pull?
I'll pull A.
A? When the motion out first?
Make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion?
Pull A.
Anything else? Okay, I want to pull A, B, C, and E, so. So do we approve the rest of the consent agenda first?
Yes.
Okay, so items D, F, G, H, and I. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It was already approved. It was already made.
Oh, that's right, we're into discussion. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended? Say aye.
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 Okay, item A, Jim, what's, what's up?
Jack, I got some questions here. Fire department, we got four in a row metro garage doors. Do we have a, all of a sudden, all these garage doors went the heck on us, or what?
No, that was part of the result of an OSHA inspection, and we had to go in and replace the closure sensors in their control boxes at all three fire stations.
Oh, okay, so after an inspection, that's what happened?
Correct.
Okay. Then I got, on page seventy-eight, we got Eckberg and Lambers, nine thousand nine fifty-five seventy-five, is that their monthly fee?
That's their prosecution fee, that's their flat fee that they charge for doing essentially our code enforcement cases.
Okay, so then the next one, six thousand four hundred twenty-eight, that's for?
That's for our civil services, and we had some unusually high interactions with our city attorney involving some of these code enforcement cases that dealt more with compliance and the code enforcement itself. So I have a copy of the bill here if you'd like to look at it.
Okay, thank you. And also on page seventy-nine, Eckberg and Lambers, again, unplanning zoning for eight hundred and sixty-four dollars.
That was a, a cost for the Prairie Hill subdivision, but that was paid from their escrow account. So we took that escrow money, and then we're paying Eckberg and Lambers that.
Okay. Next item, now from there, Anoka County, a thousand dollars, what's, it says professional fees.
That's for the updates annually we pay, or every two years we pay for the updates for the aerial photography that they do countywide. It's part of our GIS system.
So it's a thousand bucks for having them to fly a drone?
Well, they do overflights with an airplane.
Oh, okay. That's all I got on A.
Okay, I, under assessing, I assume that the fourteen thousand eight twenty-eight is a quarterly payment for next year's assessments being done this year?
Yeah, that's the quarterly payment for the first quarter of this year for next year's assessment.
Yeah, that's why it says twenty-four, okay. The other one is elections?
That's part of the JPA agreement that we pay Anoka County for the servicing and maintenance of the election machines that we have here. There's six of them that are stored here. We have a JPA agreement, and the county maintains and services those machines.
Okay, thank you. The last item is down in payroll. And that. Where'd it go? There it is. It's MSRS slash HSA slash HCSP. Otherwise, it was very clear.
That's for the municipal state retirement system, and the HSCP is the hospitalization plan that we have. So the city matches employee contribution to that MSRS system, and that's done, the payments on a monthly basis.
Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item A. Oh, I can't.
Second.
I can't, can the, can the?
Yeah, the mayor can make motions.
I always wondered about that.
You did, didn't you?
I thought that was out of order, but I guess I was wrong.
As a matter of fact, there's one point where the mayor generally is the one that's making the motion, but that's maybe another story.
In that case, I'll stick with it and make the motion.
Second.
All in favor of approving item A?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Okay, I've got B. This is on the minutes for the May twenty-second meeting. On page three of fifteen, this is according to the fifteen pages of meeting notes, they're numbering. Page three of fifteen, line nine, it's just to show proper respect for Dr. Murray. Her name isn't Michelle Marie, it's Michelle Murray. M-U-R-R-A-Y, so that should be corrected in the minutes. And page fourteen of fifteen, line twenty-nine through thirty-one, just changed line twenty-nine by asserting the word by, B-Y, after businesses. And with that, I'll move that we approve item B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. And D is the Animal Humane Society kenneling contract. No, I, I just.
I don't have D polled, but I have C polled.
Yeah. D? Did I say E?
I thought you said C. C.
C? Oh, it's D, I'm sorry. I don't know, really? I said C. Yeah, no, it's not, no, I'm screwed up here. I wanted to pull item D, not C.
Mayor, if you could then just move for reconsideration of the prior approval and move that for reconsideration to approve C and have D polled from the consent agenda. That would be your motion, at which point then you could speak to D.
Okay, I move exactly that, as you just said.
Right, so what, again, the mayor had meant to poll D, but had polled C, so when you approve the consent agenda, you approved D, but C hadn't been approved, so what the mayor is moving is for reconsideration of the prior vote by having D polled and then having C approved as a consent agenda item. Need a second for that, and then discussion and vote.
Second.
All in favor of those changes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard.
All right, you're.
So we're back to item D now.
You're testing me parliamentarian-wise today, but proceed.
Well, it's good for you. Especially after a trip on the, on the road trip through the Midwest.
Fair enough, I deserve it.
Animal Humane Society impound kenneling contract. Is this a change in the procedures for the city? I know we went through that quarantine thing.
We did have, we had this contract with Animal Humane Society from Cedar Rapids.
So we did have it before.
That was approved last year, but they had a quarantine of their facility and temporarily for eight weeks had to take no animals. We entered into that temporary contract with Isanti County Animal Patrol. So this is just a renewal of the contract that we were previously working under.
And Coon Rapids is a drop-off location?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. With that, I make a motion to approve item D on the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. That cleans that up. So now we're on to item seven.
I, I believe you had polled E, overlay project bids?
E. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Lost in my notes. Okay, E, overlay project bids. Oh, okay, that's what it is. Need to change the, the resolution signature line to reflect the new mayor, because the existing resolution says Tim Harrington.
We'll cross that out.
Yeah, it's a big, big, big change.
Take care of it, thank you.
Big, big effort.
All right.
With that, I, I move that we approve item E.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Okay, now are we on to seven? I'll eventually catch up with you guys, it's going to happen eventually.
And, and then get ahead, at which point I'll really be in trouble. Yes, Mayor, number seven.
Item seven, review of the new cannabis legislation. City Attorney Eric Larson will review the provisions of HF one hundred A bill, which contains the rules and regulations for license issuance for a cannabis business. The effective date of most recently passed cannabis legislation is August first, twenty-twenty-three. Before this date, cities need to take action on where, when, and how these types of business can operate within the municipality. This time, I'll ask Mr. Larson to give us a review of the legislation to date and recommendations for moving forward. Eric?
Thank you, Jack, as the city administrator, mayor, city council members. In light of the fact that cannabis marijuana has been unlawful and illegal in the United States, the state of Minnesota for, well, for a long time, to, to make it legal obviously opens up a, a number of issues, both on a personal level, but also, most importantly, for governmental bodies as far as oversight, regulation, and what it means with respect to the impacts on the community, and how best to essentially navigate those particular impacts. I will tell you right now that that piece of legislation is a hundred and fifty-five pages in, in length. I will also, however, let you know that, that makes sense, given the fact that now you're looking at regulating something that has been overall strictly prohibited. But it does mean that municipalities, counties, and the state, as well as the elected and appointed officials, and then attorneys such as myself trying to assist you, is we're really having a heavy lift, and I think it's going to be an overall learning curve that we'll have for a few years before we actually get our feet solidly under, under us. So that's my basic little preamble. Okay, so what does the cannabis legislation do? And again, I'm just going to do kind of a summary and then give you what I believe would be actually kind of a chronology of steps for the city of East Bethel, and more importantly, this particular body to essentially try to get our, you know, kind of institutional grasp of this particular new legislation and this new era, and how best to essentially deal with it on a local regulatory basis. So yes, effective August, August first of twenty-twenty-three, cannabis, also known as marijuana, will be legal. But what does that mean? That means that the possession of cannabis, of particular types of cannabis, by the way, not just all cannabis, but particular types, use, manufacturing, and sale of particular cannabis products will be legal in the state of Minnesota. As a result, the state of Minnesota and this legislation is going to be forming a new office to oversee and regulate this new legal substance, and that is going to be the Office of Cannabis Management. What is helpful is that it's the Office of Cannabis Management that will be doing the licensing of any retail sale, as well as the licensing of any businesses engaged in that particular process of growing for retail use all the way up to the retail sale itself. It is not going to be up to counties or the cities to oversee the licensing, and that licensing will not actually occur, it will not occur on August first of twenty-twenty-three. It's not until the office has actually been created and has put together guidances and regulations, and obviously a license application and overview process until the actual sale occurs in the state or even here in East Bethel. But what it does mean that is as of August first, is that any person at the age of twenty-one or older may use, possess, or transport cannabis paraphernalia, may possess twelve ounces or less of cannabis flower in a public place, may possess two pounds or less of cannabis flower in a person's residence, and may possess or transport eight grams or less of adult-use cannabis concentrate. So they can possess and use. Now, I'm not going to get into, you know, the prosecution and law enforcement aspect of that. That's something that's being handled by prosecutors, the county attorney's office, obviously, the state public enforcement, public safety personnel, as well as the, the court system and, and the attorneys. But I do want to focus in on a little bit as far as what that means as far as municipal regulation, because when we do get into actually the Office of Cannabis Management, looking and being prepared to. and being prepared to provide licensing in place, then they are requiring that local, that municipalities have a registration process and actually register. Well, that gets in that traditional time, place, and manner regulation and zoning and land use oversight that municipalities do for all businesses. And that gets into, well, if you are gonna allow for retail sale of cannabis in your city, where? Under what zoning? Under what type of, you know, distance restrictions? Those type of things. And then what are you gonna do as far as what information you're gonna ask within your registration in order to help inform? How are you gonna go through that administrative oversight? And what fees are you going to impose? There is a cap on those fees as far as what you can impose, but you have to look at, you know, making sure that those fees actually are relatively related to the administrative oversight that you're gonna engage in. You're gonna have to look at what that means as far as also within the city itself, your overall employment and human resources, because you cannot, at this point, refuse after, as of August first thereafter, employment just based upon cannabis use, except for some particular excluded areas of employment where you can still essentially have cannabis being a filter for particular types of employment. So it raises those type of things. And you have to be aware that people are going to be able to engage in home growth, but there are limitations with respect to that home growth of cannabis and so forth. And how do you regulate that and make sure that you have code enforcement? We talk about code enforcement here, that you have clear regulations, a clear understanding by the residents of your community as to what they can legally do with respect to home growth. And then your code enforcement and your code itself make it clear as far as when you've gone across the line, so that you can engage in appropriate code enforcement and make sure that that doesn't happen. There's still a lot to be investigated, and frankly, this raises more questions than answers. And one of the things that we're lucky in the state of Minnesota is, is that we have the League of Minnesota Cities, which is an association where frankly, all elected and appointed bodies, as well as attorneys and city administrators and staff are part, and, you know, collectively help try to essentially provide answers and templates and guidance in that respect. So this is ongoing. One of the things that's available in the legislation is that municipalities such as the city of East Bethel can impose a moratorium. And that moratorium can also be in place up until January first of two-thousand-and-twenty-five. And that is the direction that, at least at this point, I think that the city should at least look into. It doesn't mean that you have to keep that moratorium in place all the way till January two-thousand-and-twenty-five. If at an earlier point, the city of East Bethel should feel that it has, you know, good grasp of the situation, has in place good, you know, land use zoning that's been, you know, approved through good public hearings and good studies and everything in place, and you're ready to go, you can lift the moratorium before then. Now, what does a moratorium mean? A moratorium means, in this case, since licensing is not going to occur until, you know, what, two-thousand-and-twenty-four sometime, one could say, well, why do we need to rush for a moratorium? And that's one of the things I wanna look into to see if it's necessary for this body to at least seriously consider adopting a moratorium before August first of two-thousand-and-twenty-three. But I don't want any unintended consequences as well. There are creative people out there that look for loopholes, and they also look for essentially soft spots within a city. I do not want the city of East Bethel, as a city attorney, to be such a soft spot. So I'm thinking about that as well. So I've given you just a brief summary, and I did this verbally because I'm still trying to get a little bit more of a command and grasp. What my hope and intend to do is put this down in, hopefully, a little bit more coherent and reference form in a city attorney memo and revisit this issue at a city attorney report at minimum, maybe as a potential agenda item for the June twenty-six, two-thousand-and-twenty-three city council, where either for further discussion, but maybe even for a recommendation as additional actions or steps either be taken on June twenty-six or sometime in July. But I wanted to give you a heads up as far as just kind of a brief, you know, a ten-thousand-foot summary of where we're at, what this kind of generally is triggering, and what pathway we're going down. And then in my report, that will provide an opportunity for this body to have some business days to read the report. Hopefully, it is solid and substantive. That's what I try to do, and at which point we can engage in a more informed and substantive, you know, questions and answers and next steps. So that's my general report in a nutshell for you.
Thank you, Eric. This doesn't require any action, does it?
No.
Okay. Well, I'll look forward to your report.
It could also be brought up at the July work meeting instead of. That could be a possibility.
Mayor, council member, you're correct, and I have a feeling that this is gonna be an ongoing kind of iterative discussion, and I do feel that you're just gonna be basically layering on as far as what steps you take and how you take them and in what order.
As they figure them out.
Exactly. I believe that this is gonna be an ongoing discussion for two-thousand-and-twenty-three and throughout two-thousand-and-twenty-four.
City administrator?
On my staff report, as we do have a new mayor, welcome, Kevin.
Thank you.
Tim Harrington has resigned. Tim was a member of the city's Economic Development Authority. We're required to have two council persons on there. Brian is the current one on there. Now, there's a vacancy on that authority, and we do have a meeting coming up next, a week from tomorrow, on June twentieth.
I plan to be there.
And what we need to do is to make an appointment to the EDA position.
I can't appoint myself, I assume.
Probably would be best to have somebody else make the recommendation.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kevin Lewis to the EDA.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the only other thing I have to announce is that on Wednesday, June the twenty-first, we've called a special meeting with the Planning Commission to receive a presentation from Capstone Development. They want to show what their plans are for the Viking Metals Golf Course property.
Can I ask a question? Why was that necessary, instead of letting it just happen at the Planning Commission meeting?
Because they are very serious about doing this. They want to give some background information to both.
I'm not opposed to it, I'm just wondering.
To both bodies, so when it comes up at their meeting, there'll be more time focused on details than getting them up to speed with the general concept.
Instead of the general picture? Okay. Okay, thanks.
That's all I have.
Any council reports?
I have nothing.
I have one. Jack, I'm just wondering, I've had a lot of people call me and saying that they thought the Nexus thing is a done deal. So are they calling you and asking you that at all? Are you getting any calls?
I haven't gotten any calls.
Really? I don't know whether they're getting their information, but I just wanna make it clear that it's not completely done yet, so it's on the record. That's all I got.
Tim?
No, sir. Nothing to report.
I have a request, and it comes out of this most recent packet. We got a packet late Friday afternoon, and in this, this week's packet was sixty pages of quite detailed financial and legal information, agreements that have to be executed, voted on, and somebody's gotta sign them, and it looks like the sword falls on my neck, so... But it would be very helpful, I think, if we could get our city council packets generally by Thursday afternoon, to give us another weekday when people are actually in the offices to answer, get questions answered and that kind of thing. It would be very helpful, I think.
We'll try our best to do that. That's always been the goal, but lately it's been a little shorthanded, but we'll strive to make that happen.
We would appreciate it, and would also appreciate, at the same time, or even the day before possibly, getting the, just the agenda, so that we can work collaboratively on the agenda, instead of just throwing it off on your shoulders to compose it. I think it might be helpful. With that, I'll entertain a motion to bring the meeting to a close.
Mayor, appreciate it. Actually, we would be moving to a recess.
Oh, excuse me, we have a closed session.
Because we have a closed session, and then I will announce what the closed session matter will be. We will recess for everyone here in the public for the closed session, and then we'll come back and adjourn this particular city council meeting. The closed session is pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Chapter thirteen-D, specifically Section thirteen-D subdivision three-C. It has to do with the potential purchase of a property by the city for easement acquisition, and as a result, when you're looking at purchase and purchase price, those matters under negotiation are considered to be closed. This closed session will be taped, and then after the council has made a decision based upon that closed session, then a decision will be put on the record and after the recess, so that that particular decision is public. With that, we will move to a recess.
Make a motion, go into a closed session for the reasons that the city attorney has indicated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. I promise it'll get better, guys. Thanks for your forbearance.
You're just not gonna see anything out here. Congratulations, sir.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks.
Take care.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.